The school district is held on Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand nineteen. This meeting is being held to go over the agenda for a regular monthly board meeting that will be held on Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven P. M. in the high school media center. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without express permission of the meeting participants. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the view or opinion of the Ambridge Area School District Board of School Directors or the Ambridge Area School District and are solely that of the speaker. The Ambridge Area School District Board of School Directors hereby expressly disclaims any and all of responsibilities or liability for any false, inflammatory, or slanderous statements expressed by a speaker. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Here.
Mr. Coel?
Here.
Mrs. Locker?
Here.
Mrs. Mylan?
Here.
Ms. Pedico?
Here.
Mr. Sasse?
Here.
Mr. Weir?
Here.
Mr. Angus?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence this evening?
No, there's not.
Okay. Any recognition this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. Presentations?
No.
Public comment regarding agenda items only. The meet and discuss meetings are open to the public. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment or ask questions on the agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once during this half-hour period. There will be no discussion during this time, but any board member or administrator desiring to address questions or concerns may do so at the conclusion of the committee reports. At this time, the floor is now open for anyone with any questions on the agenda this evening.
My name is Jolene Maslenic. I'm from sixteen Clara Street Economy Borough. I have a child that attends the middle school. Probably some of you probably recognize my name because I've sent you all an email about what my concerns were that are going on in the middle school. Number one, bullying. Number two, children roaming the halls freely.
And this is for the agenda items only this evening?
Is number facilities and workplace safety, is that any, what's that? About building security. Can I ask you a question about cameras?
To the extent that you want to address cameras relative to the policy, I mean to the specific policy being presented, I think that's appropriate. Other concerns, I think we have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting.
If you had a minute?
I could address.
No, that's at the regular meeting.
Any of my concerns?
Yes.
That's at the end of the regular meeting.
The vote here. Right, your discretion.
Right, my discretion.
Okay, so you'll see me when?
At the end, at the end of the meeting.
After?
Any other comments on the agenda items? If not, we'll move forward with the committee reports. Mrs. Pedico, please, education and technology.
Yes, I have two items this evening. We'll look at the adoption of items one and two under education and technology, please.
We're not both.
I feel like we're already discussing. Okay, so here's the two things. We have two field trips under education and technology. We have Mr. Ramadeo, the social studies teacher at the middle school, asking for authorization to take the seventh and eighth grade social studies students to Washington. From November first through November third, the bus will depart from the middle school on Friday, the first, at four P. M., and return to the middle school Sunday, the third, around nine P. M. The trip will cost three hundred and fifty dollars per student and will cover all expenses. There will be no cost to the district. Parents or guardians will be required to sign permission or release forms. Chaperones will be required to have their clearances and all the other effective items in order to be a chaperone. Any discussion?
I know we got the agenda, so thank you very much for that. One of the questions I did have is, do we have in general a policy of like a chaperone-to-student ratio? Is, no?
No. I usually say ten. Ten to one.
Okay.
I mean, it's a rule of thumb. I can write it into the policy. I'll double check, but I don't think it's in the policy.
Okay. And we'll have that covered.
And they normally give me a list of who's chaperoning. I usually look at it. I don't have that yet.
That's fine. I was just, just curious with that.
Thank you. Good, thank you. The other is also a few field trips recommended that Todd Hartman, high school band and music teacher, be authorized to take the steel drum band to Ocean City, Maryland, from June fifteenth to June nineteenth, twenty twenty, excuse me. The steel drum band will represent the Ambridge Area School District at the Concerts on the Board of Concert Series. The event will be held on Wednesday, the seventeenth, and is sponsored by the Ocean City Development Corporation. This is also at no cost to the district. Parents or guardians will be required to sign permission or release forms, and chaperones will be required to have clearances and other things according to the Act one ninety-eight screening. Any discussion on that? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Next, we have finance and budget. Mr. Sasse, please.
Thank you. Items one through three are traditional approvals of monthly bills, salaries, and expenditures and transfers. One point of notice, the audit is not yet complete. The finance committee has yet to see a draft of the audit, but I assume that it'll be done in the next few weeks, so I doubt it'll be, I doubt it'll be a draft form for the next meeting. It'll have to wait probably till the November. I have nothing else to do, President.
Thank you, Mr. Sasse. Mr. Coel, please, voting grounds.
Energy and savings project is recommended to authorize administration to advertise or request for qualifications for a potential energy savings project within the Ambridge Area School District. The district will be seeing qualified companies develop scope, evaluate contractors, analyze and guarantee energy savings, and oversee the management of the project. No funds have been committed, nor will there be any contractual obligations with regard to a project at this time. Any questions?
I have one. What is the total benefit of us doing this? I mean, if they come back and say they need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us and we'll get it back over a ten-year period, how does that benefit Ambridge? Because in ten years, everything that they've done has become obsolete.
The theory behind the financing is that you will see generated savings in the operations of the district overall, either the energy savings or maintenance costs, and you'll be able to update your systems so they're more energy efficient. So you'll be, potentially, all you're doing is moving the expenditure that you're now paying for energy into paying the debt service for the project, and you have much more efficient systems moving into the future. So it should be neutral expenditures in your budget that allows you to upgrade your systems in a cost-effective way, so you don't have to take on additional expenditures in the future. That's the theory behind the project. And that when we talked to the company, it was AVM at the time, their philosophy is they guarantee those savings or you get a check to make up the difference if you're not generating the savings that you were seeking. So right now, we're still exploring. We haven't really defined a specific scope. The next step is to decide which company we want to work with on this project, and then determine the specifics, and then we'll be back to you. There's really no commitment other than we're seeking a company to work with.
Do we anticipate any other vendors aside from AVM?
We probably will get.
Okay, so there's other?
I suspect, I mean Constellation did this when you did the middle school renovations, so there are other vendors out there that probably will be interested in the project.
And so as it looks forward, we'll meet those other vendors?
Well, that's the purpose of this RFQ, is to solicit different vendors that potentially want to work.
What's the date on the RFQ, once it's assigned? Do you have a, have you thought about when?
When they're due?
Yes.
Well, once this is approved next week, then we'll start, you have to advertise for three weeks, and then we'll get, we'll have a final date after that, then we'll evaluate those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the building grounds? If not, athletics, Mrs. Fisher?
Nothing to report this evening.
Public relations is currently open, but there's nothing to report. Steering and rules, Mrs. Kehoe?
Item number one is policy two oh four, attendance. It is a third reading to update, it's an update to support a comprehensive approach to identify and address attendance issues. Is there any discussion? Item number two is policy two zero eight, withdrawal from school. It is a third reading. It is also an update to affirm the best interests of both students and the community that students are withdrawn from school according to the mandated protocols. Is there any questions? Item number three is policy two zero nine, health examinations slash screenings. It is a third reading, and it is to update, it's an update to ensure all district students submit to health and dental examinations in order to protect the student, the school community from the spread of communicable disease and to ensure that the potential of each student is not lessened by a remedial physical disability. Are there any questions? Item number four is policy eight oh eight, food services, a third reading. It is also an update to provide students with adequate nourishing food and beverage in order to grow, learn, and maintain good health. Are there any questions on that one? Item number five is policy seven one nine, memorials. It is also a third reading, and it's to adopt a policy to assist staff, students, and families impacted by the death, by providing guidelines for decision-making regarding memorials and memorialization activities. Any questions? Item number six is policy four three three, professional development. It is a first reading, is to, is a revision to continue professional study and in-service training for administrative professionals and support staff to enhance ability to complete responsibilities and maintain certification. Are there any questions? Item number seven is policy seven zero five, facilities and workplace safety. It is a first reading. It is a revision to maintain district facilities and operate in a condition that prioritizes the safety of students, staff, and visitors. Is there any questions? Item number eight is policy seven zero nine, building security, a first reading. It is a revision to recognize the need to maintain security of school facilities for reasons of safety, vandalism, and theft. Are there any questions? Item number nine is policy eight oh five, emergency preparedness and response. It is a first reading, is a revision to recognize the district responsibility for the safety of students, staff, visitors, and facilities. Any questions? Item number ten is policy eight zero five point one, relations with law enforcement agencies, is a first reading. It is an update to protect students and staff, maintain a safe environment in schools, and safeguard district property. Is there any questions? Item number eleven is policy eight oh five point three, school security personnel, first reading. It is to adopt, it's an adoption, to employ, contract for, and/or assign staff to coordinate the safety and security of district students, staff, visitors, and facilities. Are there any questions? That's all I have.
All right, and next we would have, I'm sorry, was there any discussion on any of those policies? I'm jumping ahead. Nope, okay. Legislative, Mrs. Kehoe again.
Item number one is resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash two, supporting House Bill twenty-one, twenty-four. It is recommended to adopt the resolution supporting House Bill ninety-seven to present the sale of e-cigarettes to minors and their use in schools. Is there any questions? That is all I have.
No discussion? At this time, before we adjourn, I'll open the floor up for any issues.
I have two concerns, actually, for State Street Elementary. One is, we have a problem, we now have pre-K in the building as well as kindergarten. Those kids are small, they're very inquisitive, and we've had in the last month four times that kids pulled the fire alarm, which automatically goes out, it goes to the fire departments, and if we don't intercept, they send them out, and eventually, we're going to get charged for that because they keep coming out. Well, fortunately, we've intercepted them four times. The kids are inquisitive, they actually say pull, so that's what they're doing. They can read and they see that, they'll learn. So with that in mind, over the last two years, we've asked several times to have the plastic covers to be put on the, the...
Like a clamshell.
Right. So that it's not as, I mean, it's, nothing's foolproof, but at least it's not going to entice them as much. We've asked them for two years, and we still haven't gotten anything.
So first I've heard of it, Kim. We'll take care of it.
Okay, so just so you know, Joanne did research and send the information. I don't know, Doug, if you know.
I never got it. It's the first time I'm hearing of it, too.
I know she sent it to Mr. Matzie, and we, she even actually found prices, reached out to the chief, got prices and everything, for whether our guys install them or whatever. So that's the first concern, and thank you for looking into that, I appreciate it. Because it just becomes the point that it's ridiculous, actually.
Say no more.
I mean, I'm proud of those kids if they really do, but it's about the same topic. The second thing is also, there's two safety issues in our parking lot. One is the grate coming around the bus turnaround.
We're aware of that.
And last week, actually, I don't know, Mr. Rosen, if you're aware of that, but Mr. Collins was up last week taking pictures because the drivers are very concerned that it's going to, with every day coming around that bus turnaround, that it's going to become a real issue with the weight of the bus. Second one, there's another grate that's in the teacher parking lot, and it's caving in. So I know last year, we addressed that. I know Joanne did multiple times. I even spoke to some people that came up, and still, you know, I don't want to see someone get hurt or something, you know, a car fall into the grate or the bus go into the grate when we can prevent it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for letting us know.
Will we be addressing it? Can I just ask?
We, that was originally going to be part of the paving project, it was going to be done at State Street. Since that got delayed, I know that Mr. Matzie has signed quotes on repairing those grate issues, so it will get done. We, I just, we haven't seen the quotes yet.
I've seen them, that's the only reason I'm in there.
Yeah, we were aware the problem existed, but it was planned to be done with the paving project, but since the paving got delayed to next summer, we know we have to take care of this. So he was seeking quotes on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else with any issues that they'd like to come forward with at this time?
Jolene, are you?
Harvey?
Did you have anything you wanted to say before we?
Now's your chance.
Now's your chance?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. The reason why I came, I think you guys received my email about the bullying and the roaming of the hallways freely in the middle school, and I just wanted to know if there was going to be any other policies, if there was going to be any policy change, because the policy that they have is not working, I'm going to tell you that right now. The other question I have is, in the hallways, there's cameras, of course. There is, how should I say this? There's a camera at the end of each hallway where my child's locker is, and then within six feet approximately, there is two cameras. I was told that my granddaughter's camera is not in view of that camera. I want to know why. You mean her locker? Yeah. Her locker. If there's four cameras in that hall, why is my granddaughter's camera not in view? And are all the cameras working? Is what I want to know.
I was not aware of any cameras that aren't working. They're new, we just put them in last year, so I would assume they're all functional, but I could have Lori's department take a look at them and make sure they're all functioning. Middle school principals have not reported that they're not working.
And if they're working, how are they focused?
Well, I mean, they can look at that, too, but we haven't received anything from the administration that says they're not picking up the views of the hallway, so, I mean, I could call.
And we have offered an opportunity for her to move her locker.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but she has friends who run her locker that do keep an eye on her, okay? So I don't want her moving.
That would not be my recommendation. If she were my daughter, I would have her move her locker.
Okay, well, I was also told that, I was also told that she could take a three-minute earlier late dismissal from class, which if the kids are roaming freely in the hall, how is she going to be protected when she's accosted alone? Tell me that.
I don't want to get into it here, but you're welcome to come in and see me, I just disagree with what you're saying, because I'm in the building quite frequently.
I've emailed you every single email that I've dealt back and forth with the administration, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you that somebody came forward that works inside that school, and they didn't have very nice things to say in a email, and I have it, I'd like to discuss it with you.
You're welcome to come in, you're welcome to share that email.
Because I haven't had any response, I haven't had any response from you about any of this, Ms. Welter.
It's not for me to respond. The building principals are in charge of that building, I'm not there to manage those issues.
But when I'm complaining about things not being handled the way I, okay, when I'm complaining to you that I'm reaching out and I'm falling upon deaf ears, do you understand what it's like when a child is sitting in front of a counselor, and the counselor asks her, how does she feel about being bullied? And when her face scrunches up and she drowns in tears and can't even talk, okay, your child isn't going through this, okay? Mine is, okay? She's upset, she's angry. I've reached out for services. I need more than that. I need more than that from the school, and I wish you would please, please, go there, ask them what they're doing, ask them what they're not doing. I need help.
We will schedule a meeting. I'll email you tomorrow.
I'd like to be president.
No, I mean, I will meet with you.
Okay.
And if you want Tom or Mr. Turk to be there, that's fine.
Okay, okay, I appreciate it.
Is there anything else for this evening before we adjourn? We may be adjourned back into executive session.
I have a question.
Who are you?
My name's Sean Dugan.
Where do you live?
Ambridge.
Thank you.
I just have, I have a question about the musical, just, let's see. I would like to know how it's run, and who runs it, and who chooses the directors and stuff for the musical. I just have a problem with, me personally, I have a problem with how it's run. I stopped helping out last year because I didn't like how it was run. My daughter quit this year, which I was upset that she actually ended up quitting because of, she just feels that, I just think you have a conflict of interest, in my personal opinion. I think you have a conflict of interest when you have directors that are in the school that are teaching outside, charging students for their lessons, and then they're the ones choosing who's in the cast. And I just think that that should not be run like that. And then I know that the last time, because I was there when they, when they switched from Laura to Mike, it didn't seem like you had any choice, any say in who the director was, because she actually reached out to us and said who she felt the director should be, and I was just wondering how the director is picked and how that's done, and who monitors what's being done in that situation.
Mr. Dugan, who is she? Someone you referenced, she didn't have any input in who was picked.
She hadn't? Well, if you want to, so when Laura, who was the director before Mike, she actually responded to all of us that were on the, and said that she actually wanted, I almost forget her name. She, she assists. You know the musical at all?
Yes.
The assistant.
Anne DeMarco?
No.
Angela Curcio?
Angela, yes. She wanted Angela to be the director, she didn't think Mike was set for the director. She reached out, and then Mike ended up being a director, but I don't know how that was chosen, is that chosen from you?
I don't know that Angela ever even applied.
No, I'm not saying that.
The high school principal makes the recommendation to me, I make the recommendation to the board.
So the board does vote on the director?
Yeah. Mike Fitzpatrick was the only person that came forward.
No, I'm not saying that, I was just saying that's how it happened, like through the emails that we were responding, and I didn't know, like, from there, how does it get chosen? And I didn't know if you had a say in who the director was, and, because it just seems like, personally, it just seems like everything is so clickish there, and they're so worried about their livelihood outside of the school, because they make a lot of money off Ambridge School students, that it just seems like when you keep them there.
So I have helped with the musical for, as a volunteer, for about fifteen years now, so I've seen a lot of directors. I know that there are four people that are included in auditions. This year, we actually hired a new director. Her name is Laura Young, that has no affiliation with anybody within the district.
But here's what I would tell you about that, I can tell you that's wrong, because one of the girls got the lead, was sick, never heard her sing because she was sick, and gets the lead. So you can say that, but it's not true, because she didn't even hear the girl sing, because she couldn't sing during tryouts. And these kids are, these kids are approached, like, oh, we're going to have an audition, you have an audition, and then you're going to have callbacks, but if you read, if you read the things, they actually had people picked even before callbacks, like in the summertime. There was students responding, oh, this is why you had me doing tap dance lessons, and this is why you had me doing this. So callbacks didn't even matter, and, and that's the thing, like, even, I took my daughter elsewhere for a couple lessons, just to prepare her for, for auditions, and that, both, both people she went and saw, they said, well, you should sing this song. Well, Brenda didn't want her to sing that song because she couldn't play the piano for it, and I'm not even speaking for my daughter in that case, that's for any student that doesn't have her as a, as an instructor outside of school, if they would have showed up that day with that song, she can't play it on the piano, and that's the only song that they would have to do their audition with, and it's like, they couldn't, she couldn't even play the piano for it. And those are the type of things that bother me, it's like such a clickish thing, and such a, such an internal thing, and they worry about their, their outside source, you see it when you're there, like.
What I can do, Mr. Dugan, moving forward, is have a conversation with the high school principal, because ultimately, that is under her purview, so she would need to do an evaluation of the whole process and protocol, maybe we can bring some outside people in to conduct those auditions.
That's what I would think, honestly, it would be great.
This is the first I have ever heard anything like this, and I've been involved for years.
I think a lot of parents are afraid, I got lucky because my daughter quit, not lucky, but I, I was able to speak to you because she, she removed herself from it. And I think a lot of parents wouldn't speak because they're afraid of what would happen to their kid, you know, and, and that sort of stuff. And then by the time you wait until musical season's over, you know, it must be, or they just let it go. And if you're, if your kid's in ninth, tenth, or eleventh grade, you don't want to say anything because you have to deal with it next year. So I, I'm here for, not just her, I'm here because I see it with a lot of students, a lot of, a lot of Ambridge residents, kids, that I feel don't get the same shake when it comes to the musical. I mean, and, and I don't think it's fair, and I, and I know it's, I know it's the principal job, I kind of agree with her, I mean, it's, you guys are the voice of the school district, not just the principal, and I just want, that's why I came, I wanted to let you know that I do see problems there, and I would, if, if they would listen to someone outside source, that would be great, like if they were.
I, I will just end with saying it is extraordinarily, extraordinarily difficult to find people that are willing to commit the time and energy that it takes to put these musicals on. So it's not as if we can go out and have our pick of hundreds of people that want to do this for our kids. I mean, that's the other issue. No one wants to do this, it's, it's hundreds of hours of their time.
Right, no, I, I understand that. I've coached for many years, I understand that sort of stuff, but it's just the idea of, it's just not, to me, when you see it and it's not fair, I just wanted to let you know that I honestly can tell you, it's not a fair process, it is not a fair process that they go through.
Mr. Dugan, does your daughter take lessons from Mrs. Benjavar?
Yes, but I can also tell you that this summer, she canceled on her every time, except for three lessons all summer.
That has nothing to do with the school.
It has nothing to do with the school, but she's representing you in that musical. So when you sit back and you, and you, and you see things like that, it just, it's hard because it doesn't feel like the kids are getting a fair shake, and she's deciding who's going to sing. She is. So she, she could spend more time with certain students and not as much time with other students. And if you have a student that doesn't take her for a lesson, and they come into the situation, it's unfair to them completely because they've never had her. I mean, you look at the musical, you tell me how many students haven't had her, that star, then I'd, then I'd be impressed, because I bet you it's not too many. I mean, most, most students take her lessons, and they get their roles because of taking and paying her for her lessons. because I bet you saw too many. I mean, most students take her lessons, and they get their roles because of taking and paying her for her lessons. But I just want to let you know. That's one thing I do see. I have been, like I said, I've been down there for a while, and I wanted to voice my opinion for all the students, not just my daughter, but for all the students.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, may I have the sunshine law, please?
Section seven oh eight of the sunshine law commits agencies to hold executive sessions to discuss employment and personnel matters, labor relations, and arbitration matters. Purchase or lease of real estate up to the time an option or agreement is obtained, litigation or potential litigation. Legal matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other agency business which are discussed in public violate lawful privilege or would violate confidentiality laws. Board of school directors held and will now hold an executive session to discuss employment and personnel matters, salary, schedule, and labor relations. The board will not return to take any legislative action.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?